The adequate notice of this regular meeting as required by the Open Public Meetings Act was provided by the posting, mailing, delivery, and filing of this notice on January ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. This notice was posted on the bulletin board in township office, sent to the Curry News and Tappan Warren, and filed with the township clerk of the township of Warren, all in accordance of the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act. I meant to do it without looking. Please join me in rising for the pledge.
Let go of your legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will call the roll. Mr. Asai. Mrs. Fightbomb?
Present.
Ms. Keller?
Here.
Mr. Otto? Mr. Tor? Mr. Valentino? Mr. Weinstein?
Here.
Mrs. Zahn?
Here.
Mr. Razee?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Resolve that the Board of Education approves the public session minutes of the November twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three board meeting.
Second.
I'll call the roll. Mrs. Fightbomb?
Yes.
Ms. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Zahn?
Yes.
Mr. Razee?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Correspondence and information. I will turn over to Dr. Mingle.
Thank you, Mr. Razee. No HIV information to report, no correspondence to report. There were two in-school suspensions at Warren Middle School.
You, Dr. Mingle. Well, good evening, everyone. Welcome. Welcome to four board members in the room and the four members of the public. We've got a good ratio going here, so I think it'll be a good meeting. Last week, I'm losing track of my time here. My mind's already to January. In the past couple of weeks, I had the honor of delivering our Educator of the Year awards to our recipients, so I just wanted to take a moment to congratulate all of those recipients. I think Dr. Mingle will share the list of who those were. That is probably one of the highlights of the role is actually getting a chance to do that and shoveling in a car and trying to hit five schools in seven minutes, all without anyone knowing you ever came or left or what your next school is or anything, but a lot of fun. So thank you for all of that. And by all means, congratulations to our well-deserved recipients. Items, I want to draw the board's attention to items C one and C two on the agenda. This is our new employees that will be joining us. We certainly want to welcome them and wish them well as they join our district. We hope they are as excited to be here as we are to have them. I also want to call the board's attention to item C nine. Ms. Davies, that's not a typo, started in this district in nineteen eighty-three. Possibly before some of us were born. I mean, I'll take it. I wasn't asking for age. But forty years is certainly remarkable, and it's my understanding that she spent time at Watchon Hills Regional High School and prior to that into the seventies. So we're looking at fifties years of service to this community, which is absolutely remarkable. So we wish her nothing but the best, and we very much thank her for all she has done for the district. Here we go. Just a quick comment from myself, if I may. Like the last days of summer, the last day of vacation, the last episode of a TV series, there are some things that I may not be ready to end, but the time has come. Let's be honest, this isn't the last episode of a TV series. The series will go on, albeit with a slightly different cast and an all-new season starting January eighth. I'm not sure if my character these past seven years was a useful one, a funny one, a helpful one, set extra, or the voiceover, but I do know it's something I will miss. Looking back over these past seven years has made me proud of what we as a district have been able to accomplish. The first board meetings I attended were held in the board office, although that may sound like a small space for a board meeting, which it is, trust me. It was more than enough space for the board members, administration, and the three audience members that would have happened on a busy meeting. Along the lines of our buildings, when I started on this board, the board had just concluded their impressive and exhaustive stud research on whether or not the district should be closing a school due to low enrollment. We're in a bit of a different place right now. In those early board years, board members would receive the agenda and accompanying information in a binder delivered to them by hand to their house. Any paper that was pink was meant to be treated as confidential, and the binder was returned to the end of, at the end of the meeting, so it could be used again in the next meeting, and the cycle continued. And while I could go on and on about how things used to be, the extreme excellence to which this district operates is something which has been impressively consistent. And that does not happen by coincidence. We simply could not be more fortunate to have the employees we do. I can't say that enough. Somebody cutting onions? My eyes. Teachers, paras, front office staff, principals, buildings and grounds, IT staff, security, compliance, administration, board office staff, the list goes on and on, and I'm confident I did not capture every group. I would name you all, but I have a reputation of running quick meetings, so I can't draw this out too much. You are all the reason we are the high standard for school districts. I previously shared with you all, it's not the bricks, the boilers, the ballfields which make our schools great. It is you, our employees, plain and simple. Thank you. Thank you for what you do day in and day out. It's the onions again. And thank you for allowing me to get to know you, and thank you for listening to my stories of my kids every year at our back-to-school event, All Hands. To my fellow and previous board members, thank you. I've learned and grown from each of you. You have all contributed to making the most rewarding volunteer experience I've ever had. One final comment. There's simply no way I could have volunteered on the board to help. Can't read my own writing. Typing. There is no way I could have volunteered on the board without the help and support of others. Since the start of attending board meetings as a member of the public in two thousand and thirteen, my wife has somehow managed to get four kids to twelve different practices in three different counties, usually starting or ending at seven PM on Monday nights, while simultaneously making sure all six of us had a meal for the evening. All homework was done, lunches were made for tomorrow, and Chromebooks were charging. Be honest, that sounds kind of tiring. Not sure how she does it. Thank you to my family, especially my wife, for their unwavering and the support. Turn it over to you.
We're going to give you a minute, and then we're going to all talk about you some more, but first, I'll break that moment for a second with some student shout-outs, which I think actually in recognition of what you would want this meeting to be about, celebrating some students here, and then our staff would be right at the top. So first, I'd like to congratulate the middle school chess team, which won first place in the Hudson Way, New Jersey Winter Chess Championship last weekend. Team members were Konstantin Bellman, Sean Routh, and Rayhan Shaw, and the team is advised by Dr. Sue Cooper. As Mr. Razee mentioned earlier, the Governor's Educator of the Year awards were given out last last week. This program highlights educational innovation, student achievement, the rewards of teaching, and important services outside the classroom environment that lead to student success. Before I announce the recipients of this year's Governor Educator of the Year awards, I just want to mention that we received more nominations this year than maybe every year I've been here combined to this point across the district, which I think is a credit to many, many unsung staff members who were also nominated, including more than a few first and second-year employees of the district. Our teacher recipients from ALT, Tara Lento, Special Education Teacher, from Central School, Celeste Ostry, Special Education Teacher, Mount Horab School, Michelle McMahon, Grade Three Teacher, Woodland School, Joan Toth, Special Education Teacher, and from the middle school, O'Brien Specken, Science Teacher. We also give out an Educational Services Professional Award at each school. At ALT, the recipient is Oscar Alfaro, Paraprofessional. At Central, Francesca Frizzoni, Instructional Specialist. At Mount Horab, Lisa Privado, Paraprofessional. At Woodland, Sue Francion, Paraprofessional. And at the middle school, Diane Moon, Paraprofessional. These awards will follow with additional recognition at a county celebration in the spring and at a board celebration later in the school year. So congratulations to all of our recipients. We look forward to celebrating you throughout the rest of the two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Thank you, Dr. Mingle. Moving on to discussion items. I don't believe there are any. We will jump to committee reports. The Curriculum and Technology Committee. Don't know if we are able to have a readout on that this evening, unfortunately. So we will jump down to the Finance Operations and Security Committee, and I will turn over to Mrs. Zahn.
Thank you, Mr. Razee. The Finance Operations Security Committee met on November twenty-eighth with three board members present. This meeting was for the initial discussion of the two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five school budget. Attached to the agenda was the somewhat voluminous information that forms the beginning of this process, including the five-year financial plan, historical budget information, the capital reserve account analysis, and the twenty-four, twenty-five budget calendar. As mentioned at the last meeting, the budget calendar includes the first full board discussion for tonight. However, as the committee reviewed the status of the current twenty-three, twenty-four budget for the beginning of the school year and looked ahead to the coming process, it was determined that tonight's full board discussion will be postponed to a later date when more information is available. Following the formation of the two thousand and twenty-four committees, that's next year, and a first meeting of the then newly constituted Finance Operations Security Committee, that committee will come back to the full board with more information, including dates for public presentations, including an event such as last year where the committee made itself available in a dedicated public meeting for the purpose of answering budget questions, an update on the first three months of the data related to the food service program, and a more detailed discussion of areas to reduce the anticipated budget. Also discussed was how information regarding new development, increasing enrollment, and the changing needs of the district can be included in our ongoing conversations with the town committee. With that, I want to publicly thank the members of the Finance Operations and Security Committee, Mr. David Razee, Mr. Scott Otto, and Mr. Valentino for their tireless efforts over the last year. We had a lot of work to do. Each of you brought valuable expertise to that work. Dave's business acumen, Scott and Ryan's experience as first responders, et cetera. I can only say, thank you. We got a lot done.
I would agree. Thank you, Mrs. Zahn. Personnel Negotiations and Communications Committee, I will turn over to Ms. Keller.
Yep. The Personnel Negotiations and Communications Committee met on November twentieth. It was attended by myself and Mr. Tor. We discussed the job description for a new role, Security Advocate, which was approved at the November board meeting. We had our first meeting with the WTA on November twentieth to establish ground rules for contract negotiations, and we established a schedule for two following negotiation sessions, one on January eighth and the next on January twenty-second.
Thank you, Ms. Keller. There was an ad hoc calendar committee. Mr. Torres was unable to. I will turn over to Mrs. Zahn. Thank you.
The chair of this committee is Mr. Tor. He's not able to be with us this evening. He's asked that I do the readout for this committee. The ad hoc calendar committee met on November twenty-seventh with all members present. The committee was formed, just as a reminder, following requests that the board include Lunar New Year to the school calendar as a school closure day. The request came as the board was in the process of developing the calendars for the twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-five, twenty-six school years. Therefore, the committee worked to develop those two calendars as well as develop a process for evaluating future calendar requests. In the process of developing the calendars, the committee reviewed a lot of data and information, which is more fully available as links in the committee agenda, but which include the following: A review of the collective bargaining agreement with the WTAA and the WTEA, consideration of feedback which had been solicited from the unions, a review of various calendar structures with a variety of start and end dates for the school year, consideration of the impact of potential state changes to the required number of snow days, the current list of school closure days, consideration of calendars used by similar and/or neighboring districts, the impact of our calendars on recruitment, the history of calendar changes in the district, et cetera. A great deal of thought and consideration and discussion went into the formation of the calendars. After these detailed conversations, the committee recommended the following: A proposed calendar for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, which was made available on the district website last week and which appears on tonight's agenda as item A two. A proposed calendar for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, which was also made available on the district website and which appears on tonight's agenda as A three. Both of these proposed calendars maintain the school year start date of the Thursday before Labor Day, which, other than the COVID year, has been the school year start date since two thousand and nineteen. Both of these proposed calendars reflect all previously approved holidays and adds Lunar New Year as an approved holiday. Both calendars include the currently required four snow days. In addition to recommending calendars, the committee has also drafted and recommended Regulation eighty-two-ten, which appears on the agenda tonight for approval as an item in D one. The proposed regulation lays out the steps that must be taken in the future for all requests to include additional holidays in the school calendar. In brief, the regulation requires that any parent or guardian of a Warren student who wishes to request the inclusion of additional holidays on the school calendar may only do so for future academic years for which calendars have not been approved yet in writing to the board secretary by no later than October fifteen of the preceding year, and must include a petition signed by no less than one hundred individual parents or guardians, with each school represented by no less than ten of those signatures. Upon receipt of a conforming petition, the board will create an ad hoc committee to review the request and make a recommendation to the whole board. If approved, this regulation will become, you know, available on the district website, and I would refer interested parties in the future to refer to that, the text of that regulation. So that's the readout on the committee, and I have to now take off Mr. Tor's hat as chair. Subsequent to the posting of the two calendars to the district website and the distribution of this agenda, the committee reconvened at my request with regard to a proposed change in captioning on the calendar. So this change came to me after the calendars had already been posted online and linked to tonight's agenda, and I communicated with the other committee members, Mr. Tor and Ms. Keller, over the weekend, and Dr. Mingle included my proposed change in the superintendent's update today, so the board members are all aware of this. However, to make sure that there is a clear record, I wanted to bring this up here publicly so that the board members could discuss it if they so desired, and so that everybody listening, that there would be a record. So the change that I proposed is a captioning change. It is not a change in days off. The proposed caption change is for the date listed December twenty-fifth. Currently, each of the days of the winter recess are captioned as "School Closed, Winter Recession." I propose that for December twenty-fifth only, the caption read "School Closed, Christmas." The remaining days in the winter recess will continue to be labeled "Winter Recession." December twenty-fifth is the only day that this is being proposed for, and it is to conform to the captioning already used for Rosh Hashanah, Yom Kippur, Diwali, Eidol Fatiar, and Lunar New Year. Presently, the calendars, as they are currently captioned, do not include an actual named recognition of any of the Christian holidays. So I invite the board at this point to have a discussion about that change. Procedurally, if there's agreement, then the voting will be for A two and A three as a
Thank you, Mrs. Zahn. Along those lines, do any board members have feedback, questions regarding any of that, but specifically the proposal put forth by Mrs. Zahn?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. We will now move on to the presentation, recognition of service. Feels awkward.
That's okay. Really gets to hear my voice a lot tonight. Tonight is the last regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education for the year two thousand and twenty-three. When the board next meets in January, the oath of office will be administered to three returning members and one new member. And for the first time since two thousand and seventeen, absent from this table at that reorganization meeting, will be Mr. David Razee. David is currently the longest-serving member of the Board of Education. His service has spanned a time of great transition for the Warren School District, from a district with declining enrollment to a district with rapidly increasing enrollment, from a district with rare public attendance at board meetings to a district with Zoom access, video recording, and active public attendance, both in person and virtual. He has served through the creation and implementation of a strategic plan, multiple referenda for capital improvements, expansion of many programs serving our students, redistricting of pandemic, and countless other events and duties that comprise the job of member of a board of education. For more than half his tenure, he has done so in positions of senior leadership, which represents the trust placed in him by his fellow board members. I think I can speak for the twenty-seven board members that have, over time, served beside him on this board when I say thank you for your leadership and for always maintaining the highest standards of collegiality. The talents that you have brought to the position of member of the Board of Education will be missed. So, without further ado, Mr. Razee, would you join me? We're going to go where we can be seen by all. Whereas Mr. David Razee has served the children and community of Warren Township as a Board of Education member for seven years, and whereas Mr. Razee has served the board as a member of the Curriculum, Communications, and Technology Committee, Finance Operations and Security Committee, the Personnel Negotiations and Communications Committee, the Negotiations Committee, the Ad Hoc Consolidations Regionalization Committee, the Ad Hoc Committee on the Impact of Future Development, and the Ad Hoc Strategic Planning Committee. And whereas Mr. Razee has served as a committee leader as chair of the Finance Operations and Security Committee, and whereas Mr. Razee has served as a board leader as president in two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty-two, and two thousand and twenty-three, and whereas Mr. Razee has served the board as alternate representative to the New Jersey School Boards Association Delegate Assembly, and as alternate representative to the Watchon Hills Municipal Alliance, and as alternate representative to the Somerset County Educational Services Commission, and whereas Mr. Razee has established in the teaching staff, parent community, and administrative team a reputation of trustworthiness, fairness, and commitment to the district's high standards. And whereas Mr. Razee has served as a champion for excellence in all areas with attention to the district's focus on students' academic and social emotional success, now therefore be it resolved that the Warren Township Board of Education, on behalf of the entire Warren community, does hereby extend its sincere thanks and gratitude to Mr. David Razee for his service to the children of Warren, and does hereby wish him all the best in all of his future endeavors. Still me. I'm going to keep the mic. I'm going to keep the mic for a few moments and invite any member of the board that would like to speak in recognition of Mr. Razee's service to do so now.
Sure, I think I'll say
Mr. Weinstein.
So as you were walking this way, I thought you were actually going to walk him out of the library, and I wasn't going to have a chance to say anything, but here we are, so I'll take my chance. I don't have anything formally prepared, but I have a couple bullet points written down that I wanted to share. Seven years is a long time to be on the board, and I think there have been times over those seven years, or at least my three here, and then there'll be more after this, that I think the job was a little unenviable in terms of being president, but I think you held yourself quite well, and the standards are quite high. And I think in an era where civil discourse seems to be a lost art, you've done a fantastic job of listening to people in an unopinionated way. You and I have not agreed on everything.
That's where you're wrong.
Touche. But I think it's a true skill and a talent and something that, in my biased opinion, makes this board operate the way that it has. And I think you've set a great example for myself and for others on this board, as well as hopefully those that come in the future. So thank you.
So I'd like to thank you from two perspectives. One, your seven years of service align completely with my older daughter's school experience as she's in sixth grade. And, you know, her experience has been wonderful, and there was many to thank for that, but I want to say how grateful I am for your part in making her experience be as positive and as wonderful as it has been. The second reason I want to thank you, similar to Mr. Weinstein, is just as a peer Board of Ed member and as your leader, as Mrs. Zahn said four times over, you have been a role model for me in terms of what exemplary board service is and should be, and I've appreciated your fair and even demeanor throughout those years that I've had the opportunity to serve, the last three. And I think it's, I want to clarify that, you know, people should not confuse your quiet and calm approach with lack of passion, because I think you've been one of the most ardent supporters of our students and our schools. I agree, you will be missed, and you can always come back. I think it's what, like, late June, late July, get back, get back in the rodeo. So thank you very much.
Still me. At this time, I'm going to depart from the normal agenda, you might call it a hijacking, and ask the audience, either in person or on Zoom, and if you are on Zoom, please raise your hand. If anyone would like to speak in recognition of Mr. Razee, now would be an opportunity to do that. Looking first to the room, I'm going to start by calling on Ms. Nancy Andrews.
Hi, am I unmuted? It's been a while since I've been on Zoom.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, great. So I wanted to just take this moment to express my sincere appreciation for Mr. David Razee for his dedicated service as president of our Board of Education. Your unwavering commitment to the betterment of our school district has not gone unnoticed. Throughout your tenure, you have demonstrated exemplary leadership, thoughtful decision-making, and a genuine passion for the well-being and success of not only our students but our staff. Your legacy of positive change and tireless efforts will undoubtedly leave a lasting impact on the Warren community. Thank you for your countless hours of hard work, your vision for excellence, and the positive influence you have had on shaping the future of our schools. your vision for excellence, and the positive influence you have had on shaping the future of our schools. Your leadership will be greatly missed, and we wish you all the best in your future endeavors. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Ms. Shafali Tajani, please.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. I'd like to thank Mr. Brzezinski for his selfless service to our schools. Mr. Brzezinski, you have served unwaveringly and with no ulterior motives. Last year, when we were suddenly left with no president a mere few weeks after the start of the new year, you selflessly stepped up again and filled that role. All of your actions have been undertaken with only the children in mind, which is the way it should be. Though I have not always agreed with some of your votes, I appreciate that you took this role seriously, that you voted thoughtfully on every topic before you and voted in a way that you felt was best for all children. You spoke to all parents with respect. That is not a minor thing, since we have all seen other BOE meetings outside of our KDA eight devolve when a president or BOE member has not acted respectfully and in a manner befitting the position he or she was elected to. Your calm and even-keeled approach will be missed. So once again, thank you for your service and thank you for everything you've done and best of luck in whatever you choose to do next.
Thank you for your comment. Philip Jones, please.
All right, wait, hold on. I can get this to work, I'm sure. There it is, okay. Wanted to say thank you, Mr. Brzezinski. As an employee in the district, it always meant a lot to see you out and about and to, whenever we saw each other, you know, you'd always have a smile and a handshake and, and it was always wonderful to see you in the schools and we really appreciate all of your hard work. I know it definitely wasn't easy a lot of the times, but you handled, you know, every situation with grace and with respect, and we are greatly appreciative of that as an association, as an employee. But also I'm sure the community feels the same way. I'm sure you could probably think of a few board meetings off the top of your head that you wish were as empty as this. Not gonna name any specifically, but I think the community probably did this for you as a, as a big thank you, so. Very much and we'll miss you.
Thank you, PJ.
Ms. Rachel Singleton, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can.
Oh, good, sorry. I'm sitting in my car, so, and it says driving mode is on. And Mr. Brzezinski, I remember sitting in the pews with you when you were looking to be elected. And it's, it's been a long time, and I just wanted to thank you for having a level head when dealing with the public and always investigating things. Not necessarily when asked to, but because you felt it was necessary to look deeper into things that were raised in conversations. And for that, I am grateful and thank you very much for your service.
Thank you, Ms. Singleton. Mr. Kevin Brotsby, please.
Hi, Kevin Brotsby, Ait Snyder Road. Just wanted to thank Dave for seven great years of leadership. You've done a very difficult job, quite admirably, and the district will be worse off for not having you.
Thank you, Mr. Brotsby. Is there anyone else virtually? How about in the room? Just a minute.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Heaney and I'm the Principal of Woodland School and the President of the Warren Township Administrators Association, WTAA. On behalf of my colleagues in the WTAA, I would like to take this opportunity to sincerely thank Mr. Dave Brzezinski for all that he has done for the Warren School District as a member of the Board of Education. Mr. Brzezinski represents all that is great about working in the Warren School District. He is the epitome of what it means to give back to his community. His kindness, support, and commitment to the students and staff of the Warren School District have been immeasurable. Some colleagues, some comments that my colleagues share include Mr. Brzezinski has provided unwavering, public, and deeply appreciated support for teachers, administrators, and students. Through all that he has been through as president, he has consistently provided endless positivity, levity when things are tough, insight, and confident direction. He's also gone out of his way to get to eat, get to know each one of us as administrators, which we are deeply thankful for. Mr. Brzezinski has also been a prime example of what it means to serve this community. He inspires staff at the start of every school year, rescues administrators with warm food when they're snowed in at the board office, and always offers witty lines to make us laugh. His heart will be missed. A famous quote reads, "Success has nothing to do with what you gain or accomplish in life. What matters is what you do for others." Mr. Brzezinski, thank you for all that you have done through your years on the Board of Ed. Your support, your encouragement, and what you have done for others have truly meant the world. You will be missed immensely.
Thank you, Mr. Heaney. Anyone else? All right, Mr. President. With these sincere sentiments offered for your service and the very best wishes for your future, I return the mic and the meeting back to you.
Thank you again. Those comments are, at times, feel like I not, I do not deserve them. But I appreciate. Enough about me, because that's not my topic. We've got some business to do here. Moving on to public commentary. So this is the first of two, first of two public commentaries. This will be on any agenda item. If any of the member, if any member of the public wishes to speak, you'll speak. Man, I wish I could. You'll have three minutes to do so. If you could kindly state your name, address, group affiliation, if appropriate. And please provide the board with your comments or feedback. This is for agenda items only. Is there anyone in the room for any agenda items? Seeing none, we will go to Zoom. There is Singleton, if you could. You know how to do it.
Rachel Singleton, 22, Dearwood Trail West. I wanted to thank Mrs. Zorn for adding Christmas in as a specific title for the 25th of December. That makes perfect sense to me. I also wanted to thank you on the committee that were looking at the calendar for coming up with a protocol to get future dates added because I don't have any religious affiliation. So it seems to me like people just stand there and shout and then they get a holiday added. There are 128 recognized excused days off school for children and staff and faculty in the state of New Jersey. So why do we need even more days off as, as a community when you can, if you need to observe, take that day off anyway and get the, the day excused? So thank you for the protocol. And if you could try and just do it after Labor Day, I never had Labor Day growing up, but I always found that coming back in September was far more pleasurable than the last few days of August. But that's for, for two future calendar years. Anyway, thank you, thank you very much for coming up with some, some rules around adding in future holidays because, uh, future religious holidays. Because the thing I can see, a couple of problems for working parents, especially if they don't get those holidays with their work, especially two working parents, that they'll have to find additional childcare cover for their children, and that could be a problem. You know, for them, especially financially. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Singleton. Are there any additional members of the public? Yes, Mrs. Andrews, please go ahead.
Andrews, President of the Warren Township Education Association. I want to offer my congratulations to my fellow colleagues. So a congratulations to Tara Lento, Oscar Alfaro, Celeste Austrie, Francesca Frasone, Michelle McMahon, Lisa Privado, Joan Toth, Sue Francion, O'Brien Specken, and Diane Moon. It's always wonderful to see our colleagues being recognized. It was well deserved. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Andrews. Any additional members either in the room or on Zoom who wish to participate in the first public commentary? Being none, is there a motion to close the first public commentary?
Motion.
Second.
Say a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. First, first public commentary has now concluded. Dr. Mingle, are there any items related to the items for board consideration in action?
Sort of. So I wasn't a board member or a member of the public, so I didn't jump in with comments, but I wanted to do that here because it is on the agenda. I, I went back and forth about preparing comments and I actually, as you know from watching meetings and everything else, I typically carefully prepare. I purposely didn't here because I thought I would have the, that whole onion problem that you were talking about earlier. And so I just thought I would highlight a few things that maybe the general population wouldn't be able to see, even the general board population because of the role of the president with the superintendent, which as has been mentioned, you've served for over half of your time on the board. I can't think of a time in, while you've been in leadership where I've called you and you didn't answer the phone. That may have been on vacations, that might have been dealing with all kinds of things personally. But what I think the general population may not realize is that there's a lot of behind-the-scenes work to keep the board of leadership apprised of things happening in the district and to make sure that you're not caught off guard so that you as board leadership can give me feedback and represent the community in ways that may not always show up at public meetings. And that includes sharing information about how you're seeing things in the, you know, out in the community, what you're hearing on the lacrosse field or wherever else, and to make sure that I'm thinking through whatever issues we're dealing with from all perspectives. That advice has been invaluable many, many times and often includes asking really good questions, which people who were at board meetings before you were on the board probably remember you doing a public commentary. And people who have served on committees with you know that you often bring up in the committee setting. Because the work of a board member, the, it's kind of like the iceberg. The, the meetings that happen here in public are just the tip. The real work happens behind the scenes and committee meetings and reading voluminous amounts of background data, which you always do so that you're prepared for every, every opportunity. Our staff has, over the, over the years when you've been president, come to expect some kind of amazing story every time that you address them at the new, the, the welcome back, which is big shoes to fill for whoever the next president is. And sometimes those stories, remember the one that he told about the airport? I think you're just making them up sometimes, but they're actually true stories that I think reflect your deep passion for this community, this, this Board of Education, the students and staff here. And I'm really happy to see the recognition from the representatives of our associations. People may not be aware that last fall, Mr. Heaney, Ms. Andrews, Mr. Brzezinski and I actually presented at school boards together. Probably the only time there's ever been a joint presentation between the leaders of two associations, the superintendent and the Board of Education president, talking about how we work together through our back-to-school process during COVID, which I think is reflective of the way you brought leadership, which I learned a lot from as the superintendent. Other things behind the scenes, besides always answering the phone. You personally were responsible for picking up, storing, and delivering, I don't know, hundreds of turkeys and for, for families in the community. As was mentioned before, you brought food to us when we were stranded at the board office during a freak snowstorm a couple of years ago when I just called you and said, I don't really, I just don't want to give you a heads up, there's nothing you can do about it, but we're basically trapped in Warren until, and you said, don't worry about it, I'm, I'm just picking up some Panera and drop it off. I don't know how that. Maybe you should have been the one clearing the roads, I don't know. And every year you also help sponsor a Buildings and Grounds picnic. Again, personally, not on behalf of the board. I mean, it's on behalf of the board because you do it, but it's out of the goodness of your heart and out of your personal pocket. You have stepped up numerous times to help families in need in ways big and small, and have inspired that to be something that we prioritize as a leadership team as well. So thank you. Many others have suggested that there's always room to come back. I know that you have other plans. I also know that Mrs. Brzezinski has given a lot in order for you to be here, and so I thank her as well. And it's just, it's been a great opportunity to learn from you and with you over almost my entire time here, everything except the first five and a half months or so. So thank you for everything.
Thank you. I, as much as I appreciate the kind words, the seven years of partnership, working closely with you has been something I've learned from tremendously. I do like to ask some questions sometimes, so I'll give you that one. That was, I think, accurate. Sometimes they can be pointed, but just kind of curious about some things. In the airport story was all because I was wearing, wearing a piece of clothing with Warren Township Board of Ed, which I very proudly wear, and I'm very proudly wearing now, so it was kind of nice to see that come full circle. I'm surprised you remember that. It was a woodland parent, actually. So thank you. Is there anything on the agenda?
There's a lot on the agenda, but I don't have any.
All right. Are there any board members who wish to pull separate, pull for vote, separate, pull an item for separate vote and/or have any questions, discussions on any agenda item? Seeing or hearing none, Mrs. Zorn?
Motion to approve items for board consideration, section 12, items A1, A2 and 3 as amended, A4 and 5, B1 through B7, C1 through C12, and D1.
All right, I'll call the roll. Mrs. Fypom?
Yes.
Ms. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Zorn?
Yes.
And Mr. Brzezinski?
Yes.
Motion's passed 5-0. Thank you. Moving on to unfinished business. I don't believe there is any new business. Again, I don't believe we have any public commentary. This is the second and final public commentary for this evening, for this year, for me. If you wish to provide the board with any feedback, you will have three minutes to do so. Please share your name, address, group affiliation, if appropriate. And the board would certainly be most welcome to hear your thoughts and feedback. Do we have any members of the public in the room that wish to provide public commentary? Any topic? Seeing none, we can move to Zoom. Are there any members of the public on Zoom? If you could kindly use the raise your hand feature? Seeing none, is there a motion to close the second public commentary?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Real quick. So as uncomfortable as this seat was tonight and other meetings, but tonight, I, I really appreciate everyone's kind words. It means a lot to me. It was nice to hear. None of that I did on my own. It was either with the board, with the district, our staff, our employees, my wife. So I'll take the comments, I'll take the feedback. Just one of us. So thank you for the partnership to everyone. I really appreciate it. With that.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Have a good night, everyone. Thank you very much.